From EAM here tonight. Since Ralph's not here, who would like to do the invocation? Mr. Herman?
Yes.
You lead us in pledge, please. Please join us.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over our meeting tonight and bless all of us and guide us to make good decisions this evening and give us the wisdom through your power to do the best that we think we can do for this city. Also, you know, during this holiday season, we want to wish and thank you for everyone in our community, help the, everyone has a good holiday because I know a lot of community spirit has been coming through lately to help everyone do that. And we ask that you watch over all the citizens of our community and also especially our first responders here and the military that's serving us around the world to protect these freedoms we have tonight to come together. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Donna. Again, this is the Casa Grande City Council Meeting on Monday, December 17th. Let the roll call show that everyone is present, please. Gloria?
Mayor McFarland, regarding the minutes.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry.
We have one item of business, and that is the swearing in of our mayor pro temp, Donna McBride.
Okay, very good.
Is the judge here? Oh, there she is. Do you want to go down front?
You know who that crowd cheer for?
Tom Major. Do we need a Bible? Do we want to push that back a little bit later, or can we? Since we haven't really approved the meeting agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly move on with the other standard business items of good life as far as you can.
Okay. Sorry, everybody. We thought we were prepared. Okay. Minutes.
Now I can do the minutes?
Yeah, now you can do the minutes.
Okay. Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from December 3rd and the city council newly formed meeting minutes from 2018 and approve and accept for the record the arts and humanities commission minutes from November 6th, the parks and rec advisory board minutes from October 4th, the judicial selection committee minutes from November 27th, and the fire personnel retirement board minutes from October 7th as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, they've been moved and seconded, the minutes. Item C, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept the claims against the city for November 28th through December 11th, 2018. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the claims are approved. Item E is the meeting agenda approval. I'll make note that we're actually making a change. And item B will hopefully go before consent agenda. And then also, I want to move item K to follow public comments. So K1 will follow H. And, yeah. If, Larry, if we have to go into executive session, should I move the reports now?
Mr. Mayor, I would not move the reports. Essentially, the executive session will run concurrent with item K. And so ultimately, if it's needed, then we'll, because item K is being moved up, we'll execute it then. Otherwise, it won't be needed at all at that point.
Okay. All right. Then we'll leave that. So with those changes, I'll accept a motion to accept.
So moved.
Does staff has any other changes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting agenda for tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, meeting agenda. We do have a special presentation tonight with the Electric Light Parade Awards. So, do you have them? You want me to come down there?
Sure, sure. I'm going to present from here tonight because we have some items to hand out. And I'm very happy tonight to present the awards for the 24th Annual Electric Light Parade for this year. There was a great turnout again, and by all accounts, a very good, yes, we will start with, yes, yes. Again, by all accounts, a very good parade again. We will be starting with Best Christmas Spirit, and we'll start with third place, and that's Casa Grande Head Start. And just a quick reminder, we will have some different awards. We had a shipping glitch, and so that these awards are just recognition for tonight, and we will deliver awards, the final awards, to the businesses. Correct, correct. Second place in Best Christmas Spirit is Grace Lutheran Church.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We'll get you a better one.
This is just recognition tonight. And first place in Best Christmas Spirit is Desert Sun Heating Cooling and Refrigeration. All right, our next category is Best Public Safety, and we'll start with Pinal County Sheriff's Office in third place. In second place, we have the City of Casa Grande Fire Department. And in first place in Best Public Safety category is the Eloy Fire Department. Okay, our next category is the Most Creative Christmas Costume. In third place is the Mission Royale Adult Committee.
The mayor.
In second place is the Youth on Track Cycling.
Downtown.
Were you judging?
No, just downtown. He was listening to downtown the whole time.
And first place in the Most Creative Christmas Costume category is the Casa Grande Union High Blue Notes and Company Dance. Need not be present till then, right? Most humorous, most humorous. Third place, InStyle Salon inside of J.C. Penney's. Second place is the Casa Grande Roller Derby.
I don't know, I might do pretty good on roller skates. I might be pretty good on roller skates. Way to go, Derby Girls. They invited me on their team after my fall. There we go. Thanks, Kelly.
And first place in the category of Most Humorous is the Desert Sky Mustangs Club. All right, our next category is Most Original. Cardinal CG in third place. In second place is the Casa Grande FFA. And first place in Most Original category, Sunscape RV Resort. And are we, is that the people's choice? Yes. All right, the next few awards only have a winner. There's no second and third place. This is the People's Choice category. Phil, how many votes did we have in People's Choice?
I believe...
Was it over 3,000, wasn't it?
Wow, that's cool.
Yes, yes. So the People's Choice Award goes to Casa Grande Jewelry and Pawn. Our next category is Small Business Award. That goes to Absolute Homes. Absolute Homes. Yes. The APS Holiday Lights Award. There will be an APS Award that will be delivered to Lowe's, and it is Lowe's. And the final award this year for the 24th Annual Electric Light Parade is the Mayor's Award, and the Mayor's Award this year goes to E&amp;J.C. Heating and Cooling. That's it for this year's awards. Just a special thanks to Adventures in Stained Glass for providing the awards this year as they have for past.
Well, we'll get it to them. Okay, the next order of business that we moved, we moved item B, which is the swearing in of our mayor pro temp, is Donna McBride. Now you can go down front.
I, Donna McBride. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the State of Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge, due to impartially discharge, the duties of mayor pro temp according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Officially. All right, item G is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of this council. There be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of agenda, of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Governor House.
Yes.
Dr. Governor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Dr. Governor Carter.
Yes.
Dr. Governor Corson.
Yes.
Dr. Governor La.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, item H is public comments. So I will open the floor for public comments. Just as a reminder, please try to keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and your address when you approach the podium. So, the floor is yours.
Lindsay Goss, 3978 North Deadwood Drive, Casa Grande. I am here tonight to clarify a couple statements and correct some misinformation that is going around the community. I have written my thoughts down to stay on track and keep my comment to three minutes. Doing the right thing isn't always easy. This is the most important lesson that my dad taught me growing up. My dad is Dave Goss, so I am here tonight to do the right thing by setting the record straight, and I am prepared to roll with the punches. I know that people read the paper and some read CG Chat. Unless you correct information, people misguidedly tend to believe it. I would like to clarify some of the statements that my dad made at the last city council meeting. His statement by no means was a threat. It was just a simple statement to the council that until this skydiving issue is worked out, that we have to put our big hangar project on hold. If we have customers who do not wish to bring their airplanes in an unsafe environment, that will impact our business. It would be absolutely foolish for us to proceed without seeing how things play out and how this might affect our business. Why would we want to borrow money to expand the business if it will not grow and we cannot pay it back? And to clarify a false statement made by someone in the public, we will not just be storing the privateer in the hangar. We need to be able to work on the plane inside because often it is too hot to work on the ramp and you can't touch the metal. We do not have entities at this time that wish to put their corporate jet in the future hangar, but without space, it is not an option. Jet fuel could potentially be more profitable than avgas due to quantities consumed by jets. If we can get some corporate jets to base their aircraft here, it would increase revenue for the airport. Just on startup, takeoff, and climb, a citation will burn 6,000 gallons per hour. That is 6,000 times $4 per gallon totaling in 24,000, or 10,000 to 12,000 from startup until they reach altitude. To have an increase in the purchases of jet fuel would be great for the city. Now I'd like to tell you a little bit about my dad. He is the most honorable man I know, a characteristic that is starting to go away in society. He has the biggest heart, another thing that you don't see as much as you would like. He has integrity, he is loyal, he is kind. He stands up for the little guy even when no one is standing behind him. He is an honest, hardworking man that just wants the best for his family and his community. The people who are bashing Dave Goss have never approached us to see what our concerns are. They have not done their research, and their statements are not based on any facts. It is only their misguided opinion. These people lack integrity, honesty, and have no backbone. The things that people are saying about him are unfounded, not kind, and just not true. I cannot stand by and let people who don't know any better believe it. He is the opposite of what people are saying about him. Some of these people don't even know him and have never talked to him in their life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Anyone else? Floor is open for public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the floor. Move to item K1. This is considering adopting a city judge and setting compensation. I think what we need to do is I'm going to open the floor for nominations as part of the process. Correct, Larry?
The floor is going to be reshaped after that order.
Okay.
Can we go back into executive session at this point?
No.
Because?
We can.
Because we just came out of executive.
Will you go back any time you want?
I don't see a reason to go back into executive session.
I don't either.
I don't think anything was discussed to the point that there's not some new things that could be brought up if we go back into executive session.
You can make a motion.
I move that we go back to executive session.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed besides me? Okay, I'm opposed. Let the record show. Sorry, everybody. We'll be back. Need a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we are out of executive session and back to item K1, which is the nomination of the city judge.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, I will read the names of the candidates in alphabetical order. As I read their names, if a council member wants to motion to nominate that individual, you may do so at that time. It will require a second in order for the individual to move on to the voting process. Our first candidate is Yancy Jen Scott.
Move to nominate.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Matt.
Who was the second? Matt nominated.
Deionne Juarez.
Move.
Second. Honorable Douglas Lasota. I move to forward his name.
Second.
Erica Radke.
I'll move to nominate.
Second.
At this time, Mayor and members of the city council, I will read the name of the individuals that have been nominated, and after I have read their names, then we will proceed with the council members voting for the individual candidate that you would like to vote for.
Gloria, when would discussion take place? When we need to discuss before we vote?
We vote, that would be now, then.
Right.
Is there any discussion in the council? Mr. Powell?
Well, my discussion is, I think, the one we really know what we have with is Judge Waters. And I know I read here successfully wrote security grants awarding $24,500, update replaced court video surveillance, implemented a compliance assistance program, CAP, designed to allow offenders the opportunity to reinstate their driving privilege prior to payment in full, taught at the National Judges Association, implemented paperless civic traffic caseload, increased offenders' likelihood to appear from court by encouraging participation in the court's text alert notification, intercepted more than $100,000 from debtors in Arizona State tax returns, adjudicated the court's caseload with three times the standard of the Arizona Supreme Court, and completed projects to track 100% of payments to contractual things. And she is, she has a letter here. I had my hand on it. Yeah, she had, she had a commendation, was it last page, Mayor?
It's on the last pages.
Okay. And I'd like to read this. This, this should say a lot about her. It says, "From the court administrator, to the court administrator, Mrs. Deionne Juarez, Court Administrator, Casa Grande Municipal Court, 370-5 address wise. Dear Mrs. Waters, congratulations on being a fellow of the Institute of Court Management. I commend you on your hard work and dedication to enhancing our professional skills by completing this management program. Your research, mental health, scratching the surface of Arizona's limited judiciary courts reflects your commitment to improving court administration. I encourage you to continue devoting your time and talents advancing the management of our country's court system sincerely." And I don't know his name, but it's, it's Superior Court Judge that signs this, I assume?
Yeah. It should be at top there.
Okay. Yeah, Chief Justice, that's from the Chief Justice of the Superior Court. So my feeling is that Deionne has worked here for us for 20 years, has worked her way up. When she first got here, she didn't have the education she needed to be in that position. She didn't have the ability to speak in public like she should have, and she's undertaken those things. She's gone back to school, she's got two degrees, both of them that are combined, or indicate her professionalism in the job she does. She has gone and learned with Toastmasters how to be comfortable in front of people and do a good job that way. I think that as an employee here for 20 years, she's only had eight months to be on the court, that she deserves that job for the next two years. I think that she's earned it, she deserves it, and I would hope that the Casagrand City Council will be loyal to a long-term employee as we vote.
I'd like to tag on to what Mr. Powell just said. I too am in favor of whenever possible promoting from within. I think we send a message to all of our staff that if you work hard and you pursue your goal, when the opportunity comes up, you have a decent shot at that, at that position. Most, most of you know that I'm a product of that. I, I started as a patrolman in the city over 30 years ago and worked my way up to police chief. I think it's very important that we set that example to our staff. Otherwise, we'll end up losing them. They'll go to other, other jurisdictions, other agencies, other cities in order to fulfill those, those goals. I think Deionne has demonstrated clearly that she is willing to work hard to, to get the position. And I think any, any challenges that she may face in that position, I have all the faith in the world that she will seek answers and work hard to address those situations that may exist. So I, I thank you for that time to state that.
Anyone else? Okay, I, I too would like to add a couple cents in. I think all four candidates and the committee are, you know, Judicial Selection Committee did an amazing job. And Mike, thanks for making it a very difficult decision. So you told me it was going to be a difficult decision and that you were glad you're not in my seat, and I wish you were here, actually. So, like I said, all four, I think all four candidates could do a very good job here for the city, and I just wanted to thank them all for their time and, and, you know, spending your personal time, coming here, getting to know us, going through the grueling process, which really has been over the last couple of weeks, pretty time-consuming, I'm sure. So I wanted to thank everybody, Deionne included, I mean, everybody who participated in the process. So, thank you. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I will read the names of the candidates that have been nominated. After I read their names, then we will go in order of council members voting order and ask you to state who you are voting for by name. Okay? Yancey Jensock, Deionne Juarez, Honorable Douglas Lasota, and Erica Radke. Councilmember Huddleston.
Deionne Juarez.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Douglas Lasota.
Councilmember Herman.
Deionne Juarez.
Councilmember Cortson.
Douglas Lasota.
Councilmember Powell.
Deionne Waters.
Mayor, Mayor Protam McBride.
Douglas Lasota.
Mayor.
Why me?
Because you're the mayor.
This was probably the hardest decision, actually the second hardest decision I've made in the two years I've been mayor. So I don't make this with a, I make it with a heavy heart, how's that? And, and I, I do it for the, many of the reasons that were already mentioned up here, but I'm going to vote for Deionne Juarez.
At this time, we do show that Deionne Juarez has received majority votes.
Okay, then as the appointee, our next step is to decide the salary. I think that, that at her current level, there's a two-step increase, one for a six-month review that she didn't receive, and the second for her full year. And that total, and can I state these numbers then for the record? That total would be $89,205.58. And do we know the candidate is, will accept that amount?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if that's the case, I'll take a.
To set, to set the compensation at $89,205.58.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented. Can I get a, or do I need a roll call? I can just do a voice, voice fold. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any not approved? Okay. All right, that's approved. So that should take care of item K1. And we'll move back to the, the agenda as set up. So we'll move to item I, considering ordinance number 3112.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff recommends the Mayor and City Council award a contract to Osiris Pool and Spas in an amount not to exceed $148,195.11 to repair and replace pump and filter equipment at the Palm Island Aquatic Park. For this project, staff has used a competitive bidding process. Three bids were received on the project. Osiris Pool and Spas provided the lowest and most responsive bid for this project. The current filter system at the Palm Island Aquatic Park is 18 years old and has seen repair costs rising over the last three seasons. In addition, replacing this system will provide much safer water for our citizens, save chemical costs, and be more efficient. Osiris Pool and Spas will be able to make these repairs in the early spring so that we'll be able to have the pool up and running and ready for the summer. At this time, I would stand for questions.
I think we're all discussed out.
I actually have one question. So are you going to do this at the same time as the remodel, everything in the winter time?
We have to coordinate it with Hayden Construction. The, the pool only gets a new fence around it, so this is inside of our pump house, and so it should be very easy for them to work inside of that confined.
Hopefully in the winter time, right?
Excuse me?
Hopefully in the winter time?
Yes, they'll be, they'll be working in between February and mid-March to finish that project.
Cool. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll consider an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3112. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Araya's Pool and Spas LLC to provide replacement equipment, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $148,195.11, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3112 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to consider ordinance number 3112. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protam McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I2 is consider ordinance number 3113. Another truck, Chief? Didn't you just get one?
Yes, sir. This is the last of the initial three that we'd bought and ordered back in 2006 and received during 2007.
And it is a beautiful truck, by the way.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and council members, it's recommended the Mayor and City Council adopt an ordinance to purchase a 2019 Pierce Quantum Pumper from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. for a price of $788,613.03. This purchase is made possible through the city's capital replacement program. The cost of the Pierce Quantum, including all taxes, discounts, totals the $788,613. This cost takes into account the city making a prepayment in full amount upon order. The city will realize a savings of $36,559.91. The contract with Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. was made possible by utilizing the NPP Gov Fire Rescue Group purchasing order, which is a competitive bid process and does not charge a user fee. The city of Casa Grande has used the GPO for the purchase of two other Pierce fire trucks. The capital replacement unit is for Shop 434, a 2007 Pierce Quantum Pumper. This unit will move into the alarm engine swap-out unit to cover during maintenance and out-of-service situations for our first due Quantum. This purchase will allow us to have three Quanums for alarm engine swap-out. However, our goal is to budget in the following fiscal year for funding to refurbish one of the three Quanums and extend its useful life expectancy another 10 years. At a more cost-effective approach than use, than purchasing a new unit at that time. The city could see a savings of $250,000 over a new purchase. This would also provide us with a refurbished unit that we could evaluate and compare on expenses. We must maintain at least a minimum of two alarm engine swap-out units in order to meet our annual demands of our fleet. We cannot rely only on one engine swap-out unit. This would mean that we would need to run our ladder unit on a more regular basis and increase our maintenance costs to our fleet. Current fabrication, this new unit will be between eight and 11 months from the order date. Quantum chassis is almost identical to our other Quantum Pompers in the fleet. This chassis is a heavy-duty chassis that can withstand our unique roadway challenges we have in the city. The frame carries a 50-year warranty, the cab carries a 10-year warranty, the pumper body carries a five-year warranty, the motor is five years, 100,000 miles. Transmission is five years unlimited mileage, paint has a 10-year warranty, and the UPF water tank carries a lifetime. This purchase is made possible through the city's capital replacement program, as I mentioned earlier. The budget amount for this project was $839,000, and the expected useful lifespan of this vehicle is 12 years. The annual cost would be any maintenance and fuel needed during the year. The cost of the unit is $825,172.94 without any prepayment. Fire Department is recommending to prepay the total amount of $788,613.03 upfront and realize savings of $36,559.91 to the city. The prepayment will need to be made at time of order. The city finance director is recommending that we take this prepayment option and realize a savings which benefits the city's financial position. The outfit of the radios, mobile data terminal, mounting brackets, thermal imaging camera, and replacement equipment will be purchased when the unit arrives through the remainder of the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Chief, what station is this going to be going to?
Uh, this one, as we've been rotating through this, would end up going to Station 503 is where this one would end up.
And it's our second busiest station, 503?
No, 503 is our third.
Third, okay. What's number two, then?
Number two is 502, which we replaced the, the previous year.
Three's at the airport.
And we just replaced one this year.
That's right. Okay. Mr. Powell?
Chief, the, being able to refuel that with the other three engines as they get older?
Well, that's what we want to be able to get one back, have it refurbished, and then be able to compare on the cost of refurbishment, what are our expenses that are associated with it, and if it's possible to be able to do that with the other engines as they come up from their initial cycle.
Yeah, that puts it just about 500,000 for, instead of almost 800,000 for a, and it gets, how many more years would you say you would get out of it?
I, I could get up to 10 years. I mean, I would, I would like to see how it goes. Engine life, useful span, through NFPA and ISO is 25 years frontline service, and then after that, you have to.
I'd like to compliment you on behalf of Matt Herman for keeping that.
You stole it from him, you stole it from him.
Mr. Herman?
Yes, you know how much.
But he's still got something to say.
And, and the fact that we're able to pre-oversight, you know, and save that much money. But something I learned the other day from my fellow council members, too, that talking to someone in public safety, how important it is, especially with our ladder trucks because they're so much more expensive. And if, we have to run a ladder truck because we're short one of these pumper trucks, and if it's on the freeway and gets hit by something, unfortunately, and puts our ladder truck out of service, it takes like three years to build a ladder truck, right? Or, I mean.
It, it's about a year, two, year and a half on the ladder.
Yeah, so we could be without a ladder truck. And we also use these smaller trucks to, to backfill, so we don't have to use the ladder that much, because then we won't be without a ladder truck, so. I actually agree with having a little bit more equipment in this one, especially because you're refurbishing them, and, and, thank you, Chief.
That is a big old rascal.
Chief, I just needed some clarification. The swap-out program, is that, is that to take one of the older ones to back up for when it's needed?
No. It's a, the, the swap-out backup engine is when the first ones are out for maintenance or down for some kind of a repair for a week or two weeks. These move into that station and run first out.
Okay, and those, those would be the ones that you'll refurbish and, and utilize them as needed?
Right, that's correct. The first three that we bought, like I mentioned earlier, back in '07, those are the three that are, are, are reserve swap-out backup engines, and then one of those would be sent away so we could still maintain two, because that's what it takes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll consider ordinance number 3113.
Ordinance 3113. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting, accepting a bid from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. for the purchase of a 2019 Pierce Quantum Pumper, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $788,613.03, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3113 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and segmented. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protam McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, so ordinance 3113 is approved. We'll move to I3, consider ordinance number 3114.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the Mayor and City Council award a contract courtesy Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $172,791 for the purchase of five Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit vehicles. This request proposes the purchase of these five 2019 model Chevy Tahoe Police Pursuit SUV units. The units meet, three of the units are replacement units, and they do meet and exceed the replacement requirements, criteria that we've set for those vehicles. And two of the vehicles that we are purchasing are additions to the police fleet as part of their efficiency program. A form of solicitation for the purchase of these vehicles. A form of solicitation, uh, for the purchase of these vehicles, uh, was put out on the street, and we did get five, uh, bidders, and Courtesy Chevrolet was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The, um, purchase price for each of these vehicles, based on that bid, is thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Because of the project build schedule for these vehicles, uh, we don't anticipate delivery until March or April of two thousand and nineteen, and therefore, we do not have the procurement set for the outfit or the, um, other technology that we need for these vehicles. However, based on our current, uh, bid pricing that we have for, uh, that outfit work, we're anticipating that the, uh, outfit for the, uh, three standard vehicles would be thirty-four thousand, and the two K-nine vehicles would be thirty-six thousand. Staff did budget, um, three hundred and fifty thousand for, um, the, the total of the purchase of these vehicles with outfit, and at three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars is an estimate, we do have enough money in the budget for this purchase. So with that, I'd be happy to, uh, excuse me, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Powell?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Um, well, first of all, no, I was, I was happy to see, we were talking about that, to see that, and that you guys reached out, even though it's not here in Casa Grande, but our, but our neighbor, and unfortunately, that number didn't come in, but I'm happy to see that they did submit a bid. Um, but my question is, did, was there, there was no chance of using an existing vehicle for the police aides at all? There, there's nothing really, I mean, I, I mean, I know we have approval to get...
I don't think this is for the police.
Oh, is it the next one?
Next item is...
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I mixed them up then, I mixed them up, okay. I'll save that for my next one, the next one.
So, this is a Tahoe, and, and so the Tahoe is kind of like an upgrade to that particular vehicle, is it not?
This is our, our current SUV platform that we are currently using.
Yeah, I'm just, okay, so this is kind of what I'm saying here, is, is that, is there not where we could fulfill the same thing and maybe not go as far up as a Tahoe, and maybe go down one lower from that?
I, I don't know the specifics about, uh, the Chevrolet product, but I believe the Chevy Tahoe is the one SUV, excuse me, SUV vehicle that is rated for pursuit. And if you go to a lower-grade vehicle, something lesser, it may not be, uh, pursuit-rated, but I really don't, I can't answer that question directly.
Yeah, I, just a question, be, you know, because, I mean, it's a Tahoe, I guess, is where I'm going, and I know it's pursuit, and maybe you can...
I'll try.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go.
I wanted to, to comment on this, uh, simply to, uh, point out that I, I cannot emphasize enough how important this is to the police department, to have the proper patrol vehicle. The, the Tahoe has proven to be pretty much the ideal, uh, patrol vehicle. It's got plenty of room for the equipment that, that is now carried onboard, it's got plenty of room for the officer to be comfortable. Uh, you have to remember also that...
The K-nine, too.
Yeah, they, they have room for the K-nine, they have room for, for prisoners, um, and you have to remember that the officers are in these vehicles, uh, eight, ten, sometimes twelve hours, uh, at a shift. They are pursuit-rated, and, uh, the, the safety and the capabilities of this vehicle, um, can make the difference between an officer getting to a call, uh, quickly and safely. Uh, it can make a difference in the officer being able to, uh, safely perform a pursuit, uh, when, when it's necessary. And these vehicles, also from an officer's standpoint, they're, they're your means of, of concealment and cover in, in the, in the chance that something, that something goes bad. The officers are comfortable in these, they love them, and my, my whole point was to applaud the city for heading this direction. There, there are, uh, lesser expensive ways to go. You can, you can go back to a sedan.
No, no, never go back to a sedan.
But, uh, th, this is, this is the ideal.
And it was just a question, because, you know, you have, you have your levels of, if you're going out and you're buying a vehicle, and it's the same size, it's the same motor and that, but it's got a different package to it, I guess. That's my only concern about it. I totally defend it, I see it, because I see we've got some of our leftover sedans, and I see some of those, those poor officers crammed in there with all of the, uh, computer and everything else, so I totally support that. Mine is just when, there's just different levels of that.
Matt? I, I think to, to help counsel and Cortson, is, we're not buying the Denali of, of the Tahoe, or, you know, like the LTZ packages. We're buying the basic one, and there's only one that's really rated for pursuit, because it's not the same one that I, we could go buy at the usual. So, I'm hoping to alleviate your concern, is it's not like we're buying...
Yeah, and that's all.
The Tahoe is the Tahoe, but there's nicer Tahos, but we're not buying that.
Okay, and that's all, and it's not that I...
I think, I understood that was your question. We're not buying the one with leather and everything.
Okay, and it's not that I, you know, I want to deny our, because I totally, I remember when we first, when we first did an SUV, uh, in that, at first, I was just like, how are we going to explain this to the public, and then, you know, seeing all the stuff that they have now, so I totally support it, it's just, it's like you say, I just want to be sure that...
But we're not buying the fancy one, we're buying the police pack.
If I, if I could add, uh, one thing, if you may or may not recall, uh, it's been a few years since we, uh, took under, into consideration this Tahoe as a platform. One of the things we looked at was the potential for rebuilds. So, we, we did take, uh, two of our older Tahos, we, we picked the best one of those, and we did do the rebuild, and it's still in our fleet.
Okay.
Um, we are looking at opportunities as we go forward in the future, when we finish with their first useful life, that these can be, have a second useful life with a rebuild. So, it is one of the things that we considered. We also looked at the cost of the sedans versus the Tahos, and we were able to justify that the overall cost to operate those throughout the life of that vehicle were almost identical. So, we think it's a good decision to use the Tahoe, uh, the police supported that platform, and so far, we've had great luck with, uh, the performance of those vehicles.
Yeah, and I would never support going back to a sedan, it's just, it's, I don't know how you did it in the first place, it's dangerous having it that close, again, you know, and the ability and that. Mine was just, and Matt, you helped me a little bit there.
Any other questions, comments?
No Denali.
All right, can I get any ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number three-one-one-four, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Courtesy Chevrolet to provide five two thousand and nineteen Chevy Tahos Police Patrol Vehicles, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number three-one-one-four as presented.
Second?
You can take that one.
Can I take that one?
Moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, on ordinance three-one-one-four?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Glad to have chief on council, yes.
Yeah, I know, it does help.
Mayor Protam McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item I-four, is, which is to consider ordinance number three-one-one-five.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Santan Ford in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars for the purchase of two two thousand and nineteen Ford F-150 crew cab pickup trucks for the use as, for the, for the use of the police department, using a cooperative, uh, state contract bid, uh, for this purchase. Staff is recommending to use the state contract, uh, for the purchase of these, these two vehicles. Uh, we have spent several years, uh, bidding these pickup trucks out, and we have worked with our local vendors, and they are just unsuccessful to compete against the, uh, Valley, uh, dealerships. And when we look at those past bids and we compare those to the state bid, the state bid is really the best way to go for the purchase of these vehicles. These, uh, vehicles are additions to the police fleet and will be used, uh, for Plead Ace Aid Program, um, and, uh, these will not be pursuit-rated, uh, patrol vehicles, uh, but they will be used, uh, with the, uh, police aides for traffic control during, uh, accidents, so that, uh, regular police officers can get back to patrolling the city. These, these vehicles can also be used as reserve vehicles, not for pursuit conditions, but they will be fully, uh, equipped as police vehicles, just not pursuit-rated, so they can help with, uh, the fleet issues if we do have some down, uh, police vehicles for other police officers. The, uh, purchase of the outfit and the electronics, uh, the radios and computers for this vehicle, again, with the order date, uh, and delivery, uh, sometime in February or March, we're still working on the procurement, procurement of those items. However, the, uh, total cost, uh, for outfit of, uh, each of these vehicles total is forty-nine, with the vehicle purchase, would be forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, staff did budget one hundred thousand for this police aid vehicle program, so we do have adequate funds in the budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, I just wanted to add, this is also coming out of development impact fees, correct?
Yes.
So, so it's money that if we don't spend, we lose. Now, saying that also means we need to maintain it, which means that's added cost to the general fund, but this, this, these funds don't come out of the general fund.
Matt?
That helped me so much. But, I'm a big fan of the police aid program, I have been for eight, ten years now. Instead of sending, uh, sworn officers to take reports, I always made the joke of, hey, it'd be cheaper to, if we took a stolen bike report to buy the people a bike than to take that officer off the road for that long. Um, while that's important to people whose bike got stolen, we have people to do that now. And the whole thing was that, for me, was a cost-saving measure, and I am getting some heartburn over buying two brand-new pickup trucks for the police aid program, thinking that we've got to have some other trucks in this city somewhere, from Public Works or from somewhere else where we can, because these are not pursuit-rated, I understand that, we don't need a police special vehicle, we just need a utility-type vehicle to do traffic and probably haul some barricades and stuff, and I know that a lot of other agencies, you know, for the, uh, like the posse and the PCSO, they pass down, um, older, older patrol vehicles, so have they, has the staff, and Kevin, I know this is borderline near your department here, because you're not in the police department, have we looked through everything in the city to see if we have any trucks out there? Because, again, I'm just looking at cost they measure, Mayor, I understand the point about the development impact fees, which we do have to spend, or else we have to give them back.
Right.
I mean, but we can spend them for a lot of things.
We don't give them back, they just go away.
Yeah, that's the meat, we give them back, we don't get them, so.
So first, this will probably be the last time I purchase any vehicles for the police department, uh, I'll turn this one over to the, uh, city manager.
I figured that was Kevin, Kevin. And, and I, and Kevin, I, I understand that you're in a position tonight for, for circumstance, yes. You're not in the police department.
I need to recuse myself, my brother-in-law's sales manager up there, so.
Ah.
Okay. Larry, did you have something?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think, if I said just the second, attempting to, to respond to Councilmember Herman's, uh, comments, and I think perhaps even, um, being broad enough to, to, to fill in, uh, for Councilwoman Fitzgibbons' comments, the, the answer is yes, we have looked at and evaluated our existing fleet to determine whether or not there was sufficient vehicles within the fleet to, to, to ultimately allow these individuals the opportunity to, to, to have a vehicle, because if you recall, when the police aid position first was created, there wasn't a vehicle, so they were ultimately attempting to, to find...
That was our plan.
To find something, and, you know, if they were out attempting to respond, but, um, what has transpired, uh, under the, under the existing leadership at the police department is that these individuals are more active in responding to those calls, and as you've pointed out, sixty to eighty percent of the calls, we're able to, to actually respond to from a police aid perspective. And so ultimately, as we begin to evaluate, and the mayor's absolutely right, we had the, we had the availability of development impact fees that we could utilize to buy these vehicles new, and given the fact that we anticipate that we could essentially get seven to, seven to ten years of useful life out of these vehicles, because they're not a patrol sedan, they're not being driven the amount of hours and, and, and miles that our typical patrol fleet is, we ultimately elected and, uh, to, to bring this before council, because we feel that it's actually more efficient financially for us to buy a vehicle with development impact fees, capitalize it over ten years, and replace it, uh, and, and not have to worry about finding next year's best, uh, replacement vehicle on the street and bringing it in. So ultimately, that's what was the driver behind this decision.
And I will make comment that some of the vehicles they're driving right now are pretty bad.
Are we getting rid of any vehicle, like those...
Some of those.
Pretty bad vehicles?
Yes, we, we are actually disposing of vehicles every year. Because we have such a robust replacement syst, uh, program, we in fact are, are disposing of vehicles primarily through the Sierra auctions or other types of auction firms, right, Kevin?
And not so much because of the cost of vehicle, but we have to insure each of those vehicles.
Right.
And, and one of the things that we, uh, take into consideration when we, we see the need for a vehicle that's not currently in our fleet, um, like, I'll use the airport, for instance, the airport does not have a truck assigned to that division, and it's also a division that's subsidized by the general fund. It, it's, it doesn't make enough revenue to, to self-sustain that operation out there. So when we look at vehicles that are nearing that replacement program, we look for the best ones, and then we see if we can roll those into that fleet. We've been able to support the airport with a decent pickup truck, but it is not a truck that I would probably put out on the road very often, and definitely wouldn't want our police aides, uh, driving around in it, uh, doing what they need to out in, in traffic, but it, we do find vehicles that really do serve the needs, uh, when we are able to retain those and not just dispose of them. But by the time we get done using a vehicle, typically, they aren't at the end of their useful life.
Any other comments or questions? Then I will, uh, entertain a ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number three-one-one-five, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, for the purchase of two two thousand and nineteen Ford pickup trucks, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or port, purchase order to Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State Bid List.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three-one-one-five as presented.
Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
I'm going to vote yes, because of development impact fees, and you guys did a great job of checking everything out, and the safety of our police aides, and Kevin, you better make the chief buy you dinner out of his own pocket.
Councilmember Cortson?
For the same reason as Councilmember Herman said, yes.
Councilmember Powell?
I'm going to abstain.
That's right, you had to...
Mayor Protam McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is I-five, it's consider ordinance three-one-one-six, it's, uh, execution of a lease agreement with United Way of Pinal County.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, staff recommends the mayor and city council approve the lease agreement between the city of Casa Grande and United Way of Pinal County. The United Way of Pinal County has been conducting its operations at the facility at, uh, Car McNatt Park since January two thousand and thirteen. The last extension in, uh, of the current lease is set to expire shortly, and city staff has reached an agreement with United Way of Pinal County to enter into a temporary lease at the Pierce Center for a term of one year. With the renovation, with the renovations at Car McNatt, uh, United Way needed to find a temporary place to relocate. That combined with our own consolidation efforts as we begin to relocate to the new recreation center, the Pierce Center has become temporarily available. This lease provides United Way with an opportunity to sublease to Cara to help support the Casa Grande Home, homeless coalition as a resource center. Uh, the building will be occupied with the understanding that the building comes as is, and the landlord will have no obligation to improve the facility. The, like I said, this is for a term of one year with a one-year mutual option to, uh, to, option to extend, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And if I could add a little bit more to that, um, that lease, uh, again, is temporary to Stephen's point, but, uh, they're also going to get volunteers to help paint the facility, do some work on it inside, um, potentially outside if it needs it. Um, and, and they're going to be responsible for all the power, all the water, so, um, that'll be paid for actually by United Way, so there'll be no expense to the city. So there'll be no expense to the city in terms of insurance or any of that.
I do have a question, though, on that. In the agreement, it talked about that they were responsible for the maintenance and everything. How are we going to make sure that everything is properly ready for them as far as the sewer and all those things are in working condition when they do take it over? I'm just curious how we are going to prepare for that.
We don't want to hand them a building that has a hole in the roof. To your point.
No, absolutely. From the city's perspective, we could certainly meet with a bit of an inspection in advance to notate the various issues. There are going, we are routinely doing maintenance from a facilities maintenance, and I know that there is a checklist. Kevin, I don't know if you want to expand on that any further, through the routine maintenance that we traditionally do, that, again, we could meet with the staff of the United Way and just walk through that with them to ensure that they're comfortable with the takeover of the facility.
I would very much like that. And then my second question on that, when it talked about that they can sublease, because obviously, we're giving, you know, their, a dollar a year, and rightly so, they deserve it, but somebody had asked a question if they can sublease it for any amount they want, and I don't remember seeing anything in there. Is there a cost factor or an issue with, money-wise?
It's a good question.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem McBride, it's an excellent point, and I know that we've been discussing it internally, and Mark's quickly going through the document to, for that particular section. There was a fair amount of discussion on this, and our staff's, from our staff's side, that ultimately would add some language that would limit the subleasing specifically to Cara for the purposes of running a resource center, and limiting the amount of rents that could be charged to that. And so if it's not in there tonight, we will definitely make sure that it's in the final document.
I would be more comfortable with that.
Yep.
And just to be clear, it is in here. I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure, because I knew Brett had made some changes to it. But it does say, under Section 28, assignment and subletting, that landlord subject to and contingent on his review of any terms and conditions of any sublease for compliance with the terms of the lease, and provided the rent charged to Cara does not exceed the rent paid to tenant by landlord annually, agrees to permit, you know, it goes on. But basically, that language right there does not allow them to charge more for a sublease than we are getting as rent.
Where they're being charged.
Correct.
So they can charge fifty?
I thought that was in there, I just wanted to find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa.
So my question is on the term. I know there's been a lot of discussion, and it's been very clear to United Way and Cara that this is a temporary location, and so I, of course, was surprised to see one year, and then when I saw with the option for another year. But I know there's always been discussion, maybe two to three years. So my question is, and they've already received a grant for three hundred thousand dollars for three years for the resource center, in addition to another hundred thousand dollar grant, is it, you know, a possibility that we can come back after two years? Again, the years go like this, they know that they're going to have to find a more permanent location, but with the way this is, you know, the way we read this, is there an option for us to extend it one year if we needed to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons, there's actually two approaches that I can think of immediately. The first is that the council has the ability to enter into a lease at any time, and so obviously, after the second year, as you're approaching the end of the second year, it can be brought back. And/or the second item, the second alternative would be that through the direction this evening, staff can craft the final document, the final lease, to basically allow the third year as an extension, under the same mutual agreement.
Three-one-year.
So it's the preference of the council, the ordinance has been written broadly enough that would allow us to make that change to the document, and based on council direction, we could do that as well.
Yeah, I'd really like to see that, just an option.
I'm good with that.
They know it's temporary.
Yeah.
Right.
I know the three of us are good with it, or the four.
I think it's just great.
So can we add that language?
No, that language is good. That language protects it, and I was glad you thought about it.
So staff has that direction. The ordinance itself doesn't speak to any terms, it gives staff and city manager authorization to negotiate and enter into the lease.
Okay.
So since we know that, we'll fix the lease, but you don't have to make any amendments to the ordinance that's been provided.
All right.
So you obviously can, if you want to, to put that language in the ordinance, but you don't have.
As long as staff has the right direction.
Yeah.
And I guess just one other point, and Mayor Protem McBride brings it up, there was one modification that I had referenced in an email to Manny Bowler regarding the rent, and it's really not significant, but I believe that the lease was scheduled to be ten dollars a year versus a dollar. I know that's not material, but we'll make sure we make that change, and wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
That's fine. Got it. Okay. Can I get an ordinance number, please, then?
Ordinance number three-one-one-six, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with United Way of Pinal County Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three-one-one-six as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and segmented. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Sorry, my pen dried up. I know, I've been writing too much. All right, we have completed K one already, so we'll move to, was there any, yes, to L one, public meetings and public hearings.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. In June of 2018, city council approved the 2018 annual action plan that included city projects of thirty thousand for a shade Ramada at the community recreation center, one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for sidewalk improvement south of the Union Pacific Railroad, and five thousand dollars for the South Side Crime Prevention Education Awareness Program. In support of the city council's strategic plan, the community services director has requested to change the location of the Shade Ramada project from the community center on Pert Road to Elliott Park at 150 North Florence Street. These projects will work in concerted effort to improve the quality of life for residents living in the South Side neighborhood. A public hearing was held at Elliott Park on November 10, 2018, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., in conjunction with the South Side Neighborhood Kickoff Event with the Casa Grande Police Department, Animal Care and Adoption Center, the main library, Casa Grande Public Works Department, and the Community Services and Community Development Office. We heard from many residents in the area that they would like to see additional amenities at the Elliott Park, street and sidewalk improvements, and crime prevention programs like Neighborhood Block Watch and park enforcement. The amended annual action plan was posted for public review and comments for thirty days from November 12, 2018, through December 12, 2018. There were no comments received by the public. Staff is recommending to amend the Community Development Block Grant 2018 Annual Action Plan to include the proposed change.
Just wanted to make a comment, as I'm really glad to see this, as I'm sure, Dick, your excuse is that, you know, we have all, our city as a whole, and if one starts to crumble, then it starts encroaching, and it's next, and next, and next. And there's also the fairness, you know, in all fairness to everybody, if we're using city funds, and even if they are grant monies and that, I'm just, I'm just really glad to see this happening and seeing the response that we have and all, so I appreciate that very much.
Could we use the sidewalk money for streets? People don't really want the sidewalks as a priority. There are sidewalks through the park area, there are sidewalks on Main Street. What I hear over and over again is, why do you make us drive on these really rough streets? And even if that could start something, if that could do two blocks, or that could do three blocks, to give them an indication that we're working on it, that we're going to do something for the South Side, that would really be a better use of the money than a sidewalk.
There are some restrictions on how to use some of this federal money, so I'm not sure. I think it would have to depend on where it's at and what the use is for.
Do we table this, do we find out? Because I'd like to amend it, that we spend the money instead of on sidewalks, that we spend it on paving, and that would do some paving, I don't know how much, but I'd like to amend it that way, but until you know, maybe we could...
Larry?
Larry, do you know?
You know, I almost want to say we would.
I guess that, really, there's two specific, different, separate items that I'm hearing discussed tonight, and so I want to make sure that we're addressing them correctly. And so, Mary, I guess my first question would be to you, is that, my intuition is, is that roadway, street work would likely apply in a low-to-moderate-income area. However, one of the reasons that we've steered away from using this for streets is that you would get just a very small segment, you wouldn't even get two blocks at the hundred thousand dollars that we ultimately are going to spend on sidewalks. And Mr. Powell, your point is...
You know what two blocks would do to encourage those people down there, that sometime in the future, and who knows when, the city's going to do that for.
Right.
And they've lived over there, the railroad tracks a fence, and a lot of people don't know what goes on over there, and thinks it's a rough neighborhood and whatever, and it's not at all.
Absolutely not.
There's some very nice people living over there, and I think that if we could get that into street repair, even if it was two blocks, you've got two blocks from, basically, right down in front on Main Avenue between Florence and Sacatoon Street.
Kevin?
If you even did those, or did two blocks down Florence, anything would help.
Kevin, where are those streets on our planet currently? Because if they're that bad, they should be on our radar.
They're really, really bad.
They are programmed, and they're in the 2020, or, excuse me, 1920, so fiscal year 1920.
So 2019?
2019. Hello.
Fiscal year 1920, so fiscal year...
Next fiscal year.
Twenty twenty.
I don't think you can wait two more years.
Twenty twenty, you mean?
2019 or 2020?
I don't think, I think it's almost unethical to let it stay like it is for two more years.
So, Mary, my question is this, is this for the upcoming fiscal year, meaning we've gone through the process, and could we, in fact, make a change to the application at this point in time?
We've already done the engineering for the sidewalk project.
Right.
So we were, I think Public Works is ready to go out to bid.
Right, this is...
For the sidewalk project.
So I guess the point that I'm trying to make, to, based on the timing of this particular element, this is information that we've actually programmed over the course of the last several years, so, or over the course of the last year, to make a change to this at this point in time would be somewhat difficult. It would be better served for us to take the recommendation of potentially putting streets into next, our next cycle, and actually achieve it through that, attempt to achieve it through that mechanism, is that correct?
And it sounded to me that it's in the 1920, so starting July, this next year, it's in that fiscal year, for the South Side.
I see what you're saying. Now I get it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, the only item on, the only item tonight is to change the location of the Ramada. That's all this is.
Dash twenty.
I know. I got it.
I've been...
So, Kevin, Kevin, you're going to put that on your priority list, right? For Mr. Powell?
Thank you very much, Kevin. I'll vote for anything you have.
So can I get a...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you own Elliott Park?
Councilmember Huddleston, we do not currently own Elliott Park, but we are in the final stages of, we have actually come to a verbal agreement with the school district to exchange the park for use of tower space for their antenna, and so we're finalizing the legal documents as we speak.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? Can I get a, oh, this is a public hearing?
Yes.
So, since we've already discussed it, I'll open it for a public comment. Kind of went backwards there. Anyone?
I don't...
Everybody okay on this? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we just discussed it.
No, I just, what I wanted to say was, I think it would do, it would really be neat to get that down there. I think that would really add a lot to the, anything they see start happening from the city, it just builds our rapport down there, and that's a great, whoever decided to do this, I really compliment them, because that's a great exchange.
There's other stuff.
Yep.
Okay. No other comments, then I'll entertain a resolution, please.
Resolution number five-one-five-two, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant entitlement 2018 Annual Action Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move resolution number five-one-five-two to be accepted as read.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and segmented. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Protem McFarland.
Yes.
Mayor.
Did she say McFarland?
I read that wrong. She said McFarland. You got demoted.
McBride, McFarland, uh-oh.
Oh, Mary.
McBride?
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
I think we're punchy after you go so many hours.
All right, yeah, I think so. Okay, so we're going to move right to reports, and then we'll adjourn. So since I haven't, in two years, been first, I'm going to go first.
Oh.
You're right.
So, it's not that long. We did attend the PSPRS, which is the Public Safety, actually, it's the, yeah, Police Safety Public Retirement System, and new stuff that are going on, we still have issues with it, we still are underwater to the tune of about forty-one million dollars, so still work, a lot of work to be done. But it's not bankrupt, so that's a good thing. And we're in better shape than a lot of other cities that I was visiting with. Also met with Cable One and SCMPO, which is our sun corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, and part of their safety plan is we're going to start entertaining a distracted driving initiative, so you may be hearing more about this, we may bring it to a study session so that we can have a little open discussion on it. There's several counties that are enacting some distracted driving laws, because the state's not addressing it, and so there's a push afoot to get the counties and the cities to enact the laws for them. It's one way to get it done. I attended two economic development meetings, one was with Land Advisors, it was their annual partnership program, and then also the Pinal Partnerships, Elliott Pollock did a forecast session, and in both of those economic development meetings, Casa Grande and Pinal County was discussed heavily, and all of the economic indicators were very, very positive from all of those organizations, which are all statewide organizations, so. This week, I'm meeting with a Dr. Strassler from ASU regarding affordable housing, so that'll be interesting, I'll give you a report and update on that. And then we have a special council meeting this Thursday for the, to discuss the FAA ruling and our options, so I hope that everyone will be there.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
I didn't get noticed about.
Yes, you did. Thursday at 5:30.
I beg your pardon.
You got an email.
Okay. I check them all the time.
At 5:30. Yeah, it's 5:30 here, Thursday.
In case you didn't have enough fun tonight.
Yeah, if you didn't have enough fun tonight, come back Thursday at 5:30.
Okay.
And then I just want to wish everybody, oh, one last thing, before I wish everybody a good night. Don't forget to shop local, shop downtown, shop local, keep your money here, and Merry Christmas, everybody. That's it. Let's go over, we'll go over to Lisa first.
Lisa.
I know.
Do you have your resolution?
I'm really trying.
Just a reminder, for any of you who haven't done the recycling survey, it's really important just to give us your feedback, so it's three questions, so no big deal, it'll take you a minute to do, so I'm really hoping you go online and provide that input. And then, you know, I really, I really don't have a whole lot, you know, again, wanted to just kind of comment on the, everyone was here for the Christmas, the parade, and you know, it was just such a great, you know, community effort, and I just wanted to... you know, it was just such a great, you know, community after, and I just wanted to congratulate all the winners, even though they're all gone now. But, and again, just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and a safe and happy New Year. That's it.
Oh, go ahead, man, I'm sorry.
We're talking out of turn.
We'll just go in, we'll just go in order.
So, we got, we got to see the Blue Santa Project on Saturday at the police department, and the youth commission wanted to sponsor some families. And the police department says, hey, we have families. So, the youth commission sponsored two families, went and got the gifts, wrapped them up, and all day were like the elves helping the Santa. And the Santa actually wears blue, instead of red.
Cool.
And the youth commissions were wondering if the kids would be confused. And I did hear something coming out, and they were like, why they're wearing blue? And the parents said, well, because his red one was dirty, you know, so. But it was, the point of it is a really neat thing to see, especially because the kids were so involved, the youth commission kids were so involved. And when one of their families walked in, they go, oh, that's little Lucas, and we got him, you know, they were very excited about it. So, it's a great community coming together. And everyone got turkeys, too, from the police department. So, that's pretty cool. And then, I got to ring the bell, which I know a lot of you did. But the best part is, is ASU Game Day, so I was wearing an ASU Santa hat, and a U of A fan says, hey, I'll put $20 in if you take off that hat. So, I did. So, we got 20 bucks, so that's pretty cool. Nice U of A fan. But it's neat to see all the people that, that give in our town. And sometimes, not to stereotype, but the people you don't think are gonna give, give more than the people you think are gonna give. So, it's pretty neat. And as my last official duty as Mayor Pro Tim, this time, I got to go to the Sun Corridor Transportation Summit and eat orange sauce chicken with every, whatever the lunch was, but thank you.
Orange pillet chicken.
No, it was just chicken with some weird orange sauce. But, in all seriousness, the state of transportation of the roads in Arizona is a D-plus from the Society of Engineers. And that puts us a little better off than a lot of states. However, 36% of our roads are inadequate. And the big point of this whole thing was, our gas tax, which is 18.4 cents, has, is the fourth longest, it's never been changed, that it hasn't been changed since 91. And so, that purchasing power now is the same as a dime today, instead of the 18 cents that was passed. And the interesting thing, so the most popular car that year in 91 was a Ford Taurus, which got 19 miles to the gallon. And the most popular car today is a Honda Civic, that gets 36 miles to the gallon. So, we're not getting nearly the tax revenue. And they're sweeping it towards.
No, I'm saying.
I'm trying to educate you guys on what's going on.
I know, we were talking gas tax.
We said how good you're doing, man.
Yeah.
So, they're trying to, and they're sweeping all of our money to the DPS, and now with the new fee, that's supposed to backfill that. And so, then the US, this is the interesting part, is the US Chamber of Commerce was there, and said, we've got this plan, we'll tax everybody, and everyone will go along with it. And I'm thinking to myself, no, they won't. Because they can't even pass a $32 fee without everybody, you know? And then there, there was other proposed fees of, you know, and once again, being from Pinell County and Casa Grande, they said, well, we could do it per mile, per user. I go, whoa, people in Phoenix drive about eight miles to work, and people in our area drive a lot more, but all the roads up there. So, they're still trying to come up with an equitable way. And it's just not a good situation, is what I got. But the I-10 is on the 10-year plan. But the bad part about that is, by the time it gets on 10-year plan, they're only gonna put one lane extra, and by then, we're gonna need two, probably. But, we just hope they do something. But, but the talks with the, with the tribe are, are progressing there. So, hopefully, the I-10, it was very high at the top of their list. And an interesting note is, one of the speakers was Pat Wesselman from Frito-Lay here in Casa Grande, about transportation infrastructure, about the I-10 and everything. And 50% of the product made here goes up the I-10 to Phoenix. So, that's how much they use it, and how important it is to them at Frito-Lay. And Steve Hardisty, they said they participated with the Downtown Winter Wonderland Festival this year, and they, they liked it. So, you might want to hit him up to be a bigger sponsor, he said. So, in case I ever get to tell you, I'll tell you now, in front of everybody. But anyway, it was kind of a fun day, and I appreciate the mayor letting me do that. And it was neat to see a lot of people talking about it. And everyone agrees we have a problem, but there's no good solution yet, like a lot of our problems. And with that, Merry Christmas, and everything else.
Can I just say one more thing, really quick, Donna? Really quick, but I have to, because I was so excited about this with Larry, when we got, in his weekly update, you guys probably saw the internship and management program. This just makes me so happy. You know, I just think something like this, you know, I've been going to these league conferences, and so many cities have these programs. And so, I know we've had many discussions. And I just really appreciate you taking it so serious. And, you know, I think by having high school and college kids coming in and doing internship programs, you know, it, it really opens the door. I mean, if you can learn, you know, what, you know, how the city operates, and then having it on your resume. So, I just, I know it was part of the strategic plan, we all discussed it, but I just, I just, I'm really excited about it. And I think it's gonna be a great program.
Strategic plan in action.
Yeah, it's gonna be great, so. And for more information, how can you get more information? I know it's.
We'll push it out.
It's in final draft form at this point.
No, was I supposed to?
Be on the website.
We were waiting for any comments.
Okay. Okay. Oh, sorry, thanks, I forgot.
No, I, yeah.
Donna, you're next.
I've had comments. Just a couple things, Steve, I've noticed that the internet has been going crazy with announcements on Carmec Nat, reminding people that we're gonna be starting some construction, and all of the first-of-the-year activities. So, hats off to whoever is helping with that, because I've just seen them all over the internet, so that's really good.
She's probably sitting up there.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere. Let me, thank you.
Way.
So, and people have been making comments. So, I think that that's one of the things that we really wanted the public to, to be aware of.
The paper's helping, too.
You know, and then.
Dispatch helping, too?
Yes.
Get the word out, on Carmec Nat Park?
We will have. We will have. And then, the last thing, as far as activities, I know we have had tons of stuff going on in the city. I will tell you that I had the opportunity to be a judge at the Legacy School Swelling Bee, and I was terrified that they were gonna announce something that I wouldn't know what it was, or, or how to spell it. But they had, you know, almost 30 young people doing that, and I think 3rd through 8th grade, and a 5th grader won it. And I know I'm not smarter than a 5th grader, so, but it was a lot of fun. So, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Mr. Powell?
I wanted to, to talk about water. The, what they're, what the latest is, is they've, they've got a drought contingency plan, they're trying to get passed. But Pinell County is really being hurt on it agriculturally. So, it hadn't been signed yet, and the Department of Interior says it has to be signed and in by the January 31st, or they'll decide who gets what. The legislature has to approve it, and they don't go into session until Jan, and, you know, to teach somebody about water, even in a month, is really something. So, they're gonna, I don't know if they'll get it done. But the forecast for running out of water has gotten worse. They were saying in 2020, we would probably go to 1075, which would be the first, we'd lose 320,000 acre feet of water for the state of Arizona. Now, they're saying we'll be at 1050, which is Tier 2 by 2020, which is not that far away. And that would be a horrendous loss. And one of the things I've done, I've got a plan that some of you know about, and, and I talked to Flake about it when he was popular. And Kirkpatrick, she supported it very definitely. O'Halloran thinks it might be above his pay scale. I got into Kyle's liaison, and talked to him, and we're trying to get to, to Cinemum, and, and to ASU to work on it. It would be a plan that would bring a constant source of water, that would start, would, would benefit all seven states that share the Colorado River, and also leave water to go into Mexico, you know, on a permanent basis. And we're getting less every year, the, the, the water is looking worse. That's why they're saying they moved it up two or three years from when they thought to 2020, to 1050. And the next one they go to is, they're hovering above Deadpool. And if it gets to Deadpool, there's no water for anybody that comes out of the Colorado River, because there won't be any water coming out. So, those are, those are important things. And, as I say, the, the idea will work, it's whether you can get, get it done on a, it needs to be done on a regional basis, like by the seven basin states. And if it's not done, I don't know what we'll do about water. It's gonna really stop development. And, and that's become apparent now, that people that want to grow a lot, aren't gonna grow a lot if they don't have water, and we don't have water right now. So, I'll, I'll try to keep you apprised of what goes on, and wish me luck, but.
Actually, to tail on what you always gonna bring up, the drought contingency plan, that too. Also, it seems like we're finally, Pinell County's finally getting a little bit of an air there. Ryan Rhodes was on the radio today. Ryan Rhodes is a, actually, he lives up in Phoenix, but he grew up here in, in Casa Grande, and his folks still live here. And he's one of the biggest farmers, I didn't realize that, in Pinell County. And so, finally, Pinell County's getting some recognition. What they're trying to do is to placate us, which is in, in a good way, I guess, because what they're saying is, they would give money to the agricultural community for the wells and for the hookups, and that. So, that is something, that's the first really good news I've heard about that for, for Pinell County there. So, I wanted to bring that up. The second one is on the recycling. Did anybody see 60 Minutes on the recycling, the plastic crisis? It's just, I mean, you know, our little thing, putting our things in the bin, is nothing. It's putting a little thing in the bin. And I'm starting to think, because of what we're dealing with, the fact that we can't find a market for it, and what I'm afraid of is, you know, I take my, my grocery bags, my plastic bags and stuff to the grocery stores, and that, I wonder what they do with it. You know, I wonder if they don't just throw it somewhere, because that's what they're saying, that a lot of these places do, is there's no place for it to go. And so, I'm almost wondering if we shouldn't start maybe our own little, of, let's not use it, let's just not use it. Instead of using it and trying to recycle it, let's not use it, let's use paper cups. So, here at the city, let's set some, some, that, let's have pitchers of water with paper cups, and use paper plates, and, and that sort of thing. And maybe just get a little bit of a swell there, we would, it might be a drop in the bucket. I'm not seeing a lot that people would be willing to pay for that recycling. And the more I hear, and the more I read, especially on a national and worldwide, there's no place for it to go, anyway. So, even if we paid extra, 20, 30 dollars extra to have someone take it, I don't know if it's gonna do what we want it to do, if it's gonna go someplace beneficial and be redone, because you can only recycle so much. So, I'm just saying, let's look maybe a little differently at that, and use it as a different tax. And Merry Christmas.
Mr. Huddleston? City was kind enough to send me to a conference in Mesa, put on by the League of Cities for newly elected officials. Thank you, Gloria, for setting that up. I learned a lot of do's and don'ts of sitting on the council. Also attended the Casa Foundation Group, Christmas for Foster Kids. And that was a rewarding experience. My wife is on the, on the foundation, and so she worked hard on it. But I also wanted to thank the police department, Sergeant Ingstrom and two of his officers were there, and the, and the kids loved him. They, they had their pictures taken with all the kids, it was really nice. Anyway, Merry Christmas to everyone, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas to our staff and council, and to all of our constituents that are here, and anybody watching. And I did want to say one last thing. Fresno State won 31 to 20 over ASU at the Las Vegas Bowl. Media adjourn.
And he only says that because.